To order, roll call please.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Cook, Oppenheim.
Here.
Tacaoca.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Marquardt.
Here.
Okay, we have a court of present, would everybody please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Any citizens wish to address the board tonight on any manner, matter, other than what's on the committee at the hall? You want a name and the address and all that?
Sure. My name's Denise Rolando, and I'm at thirty-seven twenty-five Clearview Avenue in Gurnee.
Yeah.
So, my name is Denise Rolando, and I'm the organizer for Go Humane Lake County. We are a grassroots organization founded in December twenty-seventeen to advocate for humane laws and ordinances to end the sale of commercially bred animals in our communities. Our goal is to end the pet overpopulation crisis in our communities and the resulting burden on the taxpayers of Lake County. As you may know, over two-hundred-and-seventy communities in the country and two states have enacted bans on the retail sale of commercially bred pets. Cook County and Waukegan already have ordinances in place, and Buffalo Grove is currently considering one. Thank you to the village president, to the trustees, and the Vernon Hills citizens for speaking up and uniting behind the humane cause. Because of your actions, there will be no demand for puppy mill dogs here. You have also given hope to hundreds of shelter and rescue workers, fosters, advocates, volunteers of all sorts, who work tirelessly to save the unwanted, abandoned, and sick animals that are being dumped every day in our county. There will never be enough homes for all the pets that are being bred and sold in this country, and we are no longer willing to accept that. Your community is an example of what is right in today's society. On behalf of Mark Ayers, the Illinois Director for the Humane Society of the United States, Carrie Myers of the Puppy Mill Project in Chicago, Karen Sandy of the Puppy Mill Awareness Illinois Group in Round Lake Heights, myself, and hundreds of Go Humane Lake County supporters, we commend you and thank you for helping Lake County Go Humane.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, you're welcome. I just want to say one thing, isn't this poll chief from the committee at the hall, they're not coming back. With that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Oppenheim.
So, thank you very much for coming in Denise.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if you watched the, the video of the meeting last time when they did come to present before us, but I did meet with PetSmart and Petco and got the official opinions of what they believe is ethical treatment and lack of, and non-sale, I should say, of animals in retail settings. And so I thank you for coming in. I've also spent some time talking with Steve Dale, you probably know of Steve. For those who don't know, he's a pet enthusiast and promoter on WGN. So, we spent a long time talking. So, I guess we can use this as a segue. I was hoping to speak tonight about possibly changing the village ordinances to prevent the sale, the retail sale of animals. So, that's something that we'll perhaps discuss in new business, perhaps, but we'd be happy to hear from you again if necessary and possibly some others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next, any other citizens? Yeah. Even though I know who you are.
I know who you are.
Please state your name and address.
Lori Progar, one-oh-five Midway Lane in Vernon Hills. So, thank you, and I echo what she just said.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, as many of you know, I have been a realtor in this area for a very large firm for the past thirty-seven years, and I can honestly say, I have seen firsthand, I have seen illegal puppy mills in our area and the inhumane treatment of these animals, and the vile disgusting conditions in which they live. There are so lot of vans that go to our local fairs. There was one that, they did it in Buffalo Grove, they did it in Long Grove, they did it in Lincolnshire. I know that five different agencies were at that house often trying to shut them down. It's a very long and tedious process, it wasn't easy. I was able to get inside the house, being a realtor, and saw firsthand, even though the dogs were removed because they knew that we were coming in as realtors, and even though they were there for several hours cleaning to hide the fact they were running an illegal puppy mill, the stench was so overwhelming, I couldn't even breathe inside that house. When they were finally kicked out, all the subflooring had to be ripped out, I mean, the damage that is done to the houses, but that is by no comparison the inhumane treatments of the animals. I also went through a breeder's home in Lake County with one of your village trustees, actually, and I can personally vouch for the very sad life that those dogs lead. The females that are kept in cages their whole lives, even though it was a million-dollar home set on multiple acres, those dogs never left the cage. It was so, so, so sad, and I said what I could while still being professional as a realtor because I was there to show the home and had to be, I couldn't really lecture the guy because that's not the purpose of why he let me into his house. So, I have seen puppy mill survivor, I've seen it all, and I certainly hope with all of my heart that you do adapt in this village a humane pet store ordinance because no animal should suffer so that someone can make a profit off of them. We don't have the right to do that. So, thank you, and I'm so proud to be a resident in Vernon Hills and a village that said no to pet land. Thank all of you.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. All right. Next item, anybody else on this? Okay. The next item is when our next boarding is, board meeting is Wednesday, October seventeenth. Any comments on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't here at the last meeting when you guys decided to move from Tuesday to Wednesday. That's not a good day for me. For the last three years, I've been volunteering on that night up at Level, and it's the third Wednesday of the month. I can be here by eight, eight-thirty, but no earlier than that, so if we could push it to Thursday, it would be more greatly appreciated, but then again, I'm at the pleasure of the board. And Tuesday was just Jim Dandy for me, but apparently that's a problem for Trustee Cook.
I believe Trustee Cook is coming in on October seventeenth, so, and I was asked.
Yeah, well.
So, I'm, if it was changed now to Thursday.
Is that okay, is anybody here or not okay?
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
No good?
Because Tuesday is your birthday, so we're good. So, I don't know, is everybody fine with Thursday?
No, not so far.
So, I'll just be absent for the first hour, give or take.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other comments on this one? Okay, next item is proclamation, recognizing Lynn Deanda's retirement. Lynn, why don't you come up to the presentation altar here?
Really make this painful for you.
Oh, she's a Saks fan, God bless her, you know. You know, anyway, the Saks will rise again.
They will.
We know.
Uh-huh.
Even though we don't have Burley anymore.
We'll get him back.
To Lynn Deanda in appreciation for her dedicated service to the village of Vernon Hills. Lynn became the Executive Secretary for the Village of Vernon Hills in January of nineteen-ninety-nine. And in the height of the recession, became Deputy Village Clerk in two thousand nine. Prior to her tenure at Vernon Hills, Lynn worked for the Village of Bensonville as Executive Secretary from nineteen eighty-seven to ninety-nine. Was Mike there that whole time?
He, yeah.
Yeah, our past village manager, Mike Allison, was from Bensonville, too. During her tenure with Vernon Hills, Lynn served as Secretary of the Village Board of Fire and Police Commissioners and assisted with the testing of hundreds of applicants in the hiring or promotion of dozens of police officers. Lynn was integral to the operation of the village by her exceptional customer service to our residents, fellow employees, and business community, including responding to all refuge, recycling, Commonwealth, Edison, or other utility questions. That's a mouthful there. Okay, Lynn has served as the village's primary FOIA, FOIA officer, and managed the communications of the village manager's office, as well as correspondence for the village, for the president and village board. Lynn was instrumental disseminating the weekly transmittal, village board agenda, and Lynn also served on the Summer Celebration Committee and volunteered countless hours to village special events and activities. After nineteen years of dedicated service to the village and thirty-one years of municipal service, Lynn will retire on October fifth, two thousand eighteen. Lynn Deanda personifies the values of the Village of Vernon Hills through her integrity, character, dedication, and commitment to serving others. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Roger L. Byrne, President, the Village of, and the Village Board of Trustees, who hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Lynn for her years of dedicated service to the residents and employees of the Village of Vernon Hills, and wish her well in retirement this second day of October two thousand eighteen.
Thank you.
Did you make this up? No, I, no. It didn't have anything to do with the framing because it looks nice. Okay, well Lynn, why don't you go say something? Just, just humor me.
Well, I just want to thank the village board for allowing me to work here for almost twenty years, and to work with the great, our senior staff have been wonderful, I really enjoyed working with them, the police commission, the Summer Celebration Committee, fellow employees, I can't say enough about them, people like Lynn Brandl, who was just a delight, and I'm so happy that I had a chance to work with her. But I, Liz has come over from the police department, twenty years in the police department, to partner back up with Mark, so I think that they're leaving you in capable hands, and, and I thank you very much.
You're welcome, and you're, you're still going to live in town?
Yeah.
So, then I can call you.
You can. Yes, you can.
And I, we didn't go this year, but we'll go next year to a Saks game.
We will definitely go to a Saks game.
Bring the other suspects, which was my son and one of his.
Right, uh-huh, and we hit a ball.
Those are probably the only four Saks fans and.
No, no, actually, my brother and sister-in-law, my brother and sister-in-law here, they are very huge Saks fans, yeah.
Well, anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, my only fond wish for you is that it never rains at Country Thunder on you.
Oh, I, yeah, but I wear a poncho and I'm fine.
Yeah, you come prepared.
Thank you, Lynn.
And Lynn used to burn some CDs for me, which were special, funny country-western songs, and what was the one about the guy, he got thrown in jail because he smoked all, smoked all the stole cigars and smoked them all or something? What is it? Yeah. Anyway, there was, some of this was very funny. Was it Brad Paisley?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I still got the tape, so, thank you very much. All right. Next item is Oktoberfest, thank you, Joe, here.
Thank you, Your Honor. On September twenty-second, the Vernon Hills held the Fourteenth Annual Oktoberfest Celebration. The great weather, really welcomed guests of all ages, and was another great success. Thanks to the donations related to the raffle, over eight-hundred dollars was raised for the local nonprofits who participated in this year's events. Those local nonprofits this year included the Vernon Hills Seniors, Sports For All, Diamond Lake PTO, Boy Scout Troop Two Seventy-three, and Cub Scout Pack Two Seventy-three, as well as Alliance Club. A big thank you really goes out to the Park District Police, Public Works, and really all the Summer Celebration Committee members, and all the volunteers who helped make this event a success. I know Ina Marquardt was instrumental in helping put together the raffle this year, and Monica Lindine, as always, really puts in a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, long hours putting together this event, and really, you know, she really personifies the hard work that puts this event on the map for Vernon Hills, and the event really simply wouldn't happen without her dedication. Lastly, I also want to thank the village board. Again, this is one of those events that we've done for a number of years, initially with Hurricane Katrina as a fundraiser to support that, and since then, it's really morphed into a community event that has been celebrated by everyone, residents and guests alike. So, thank you very much for your support.
Yeah, well, it's a nice event, so, thank you to all the volunteers. You want to say something, Mike?
I want to say also, thank you to you, Joe, for your input with it. Again, with Monica, yes, she, she definitely knows how to do some stuff, so, a lot of things for everybody, please, Public Works, it's a, it's a great cause, so, and I hope we continue.
Yeah. Lynn, is, are those your relatives who just left?
Yes.
Well, do you want to, do you want to stay for the meeting, or do you want to go?
I'll stay with Liz.
Okay, all right, I'm just asking. All right. Okay, what's next? Chief of Police, Lincolnshire, Police Communications, Intergovernmental Agreement Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The omnibus agenda includes ordinance twenty-eighteen one-thirty-three, which seeks to have the board approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Lincolnshire. As you know, the police department jointly runs a communication center with the Countryside Fire Protection District. Lincolnshire and Libertyville are also partners in that. Lincolnshire's been with us for five years, and as we prepared a extension, as we prepared a new agreement with them this year, they received a alternative option from another community to have another community provide them services. They are still undergoing an analysis of that comparison. They needed a little more time, and through our conversations with them, we worked out a temporary extension, which essentially has them with us at least through the end of the budget year, and has them making a decision by November of this year so that we can appropriately plan our budget next year, should they elect to go with someone else. It's important to note that at no point has any displeasure with the service they've received from our communication center ever been an issue here raised by them. This is an economic decision that they are evaluating, and their village board signed off and approved the IGA at the board meeting last Monday, September twenty-fourth, so staff recommends that we do the same and that we continue to work. I can say as early as, as late as yesterday, I was in communications with them, continue to, in, in, in very good spirits, work toward finding a long-term agreement if we can.
Okay, good. Any comments or questions from the board, Anna? Okay, Trustee Schultz.
So, this is a potential defection, and yet I know that state statute or the, the way that the world is working is they're looking to limit the number of call centers. We've kind of identified ourselves as a key player, or as a player, in a reduced number. Do we need to do any additional investments in the near term to make our call center that much more of a reality as one of the key call centers going forward? Or would that just be sending good money down the drain because maybe the sheriff's office will take it all over? Just kind of looking for thoughts and.
No, I'm happy, I'll try, and it's a, it's a very complicated conversation, but if I can hit on a couple key points you said, is we are making continuous investments. In fact, the board earlier this year approved about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar investment for our new phone, our new phone system that's, that's being implemented. There are a couple places where we have held off because we continue to evaluate a bit of a shifting sands within Lake County, but to that end, both the village manager and myself are knee-deep in those conversations. We are very active, you know, we have made, as a village and as a joint ETSB board, we've made contributions to a regional nine-one-one study, and we continue in, in that regard. I, I don't, I just couldn't pretend to predict exactly what's going to come of all this. We want to stay state-of-the-art, we want to make sure we're providing the very best services to our communities and our partners, and yet also be in a position to provide the best services going forward, if that answers your question.
To the most part, it does. I mean, I guess the, the longer-term question is, the longer this percolates without resolution, major resolution, the more difficult it is, do we or don't we make major, key capital investments in this? And I guess whatever we can do as a board to support closure on this, at least closure to the extent that, hey, this is what it's going to be for the next ten years, or some defined period of time that we can all be comfortable with, I think that would be a good thing. So, whatever jungle drums you hear beating off in the distance, if you could relay back what the message is, it would truly be appreciated.
I, I will do that, and I do very much appreciate the support of the board because pretty much everything we've brought to you in, in the last year regarding this, you've been very supportive of, so, we appreciate that.
Well, I mean, you know, for example, like Glenview, how many towns do they service?
About thirteen agencies they're, they're serving.
Yeah, I, you know, and there's no real controlling type law or statute or anything even out of the county, right?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Everybody can go shopping.
That's the environment we find ourselves in right now, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, then, yeah, we, you know, maybe we could get some of your sponsors or something, to where, okay, let's do, yeah, you know, do, I don't know, how many would be a good number, five around the county?
I, I think that the, the study that's going on right now is trying to determine that. I can tell you that five is not a bad number, that, that, that you're in the ballpark, and we don't know.
Glenview takes in Cook County, obviously.
They have some of the North Shore, and they have a couple Lake County partners, so, they, for instance, they have Gray's Lake, which is a long ways from, but the technology allows these things to be connected and.
Sure, okay, well.
Am I correct, though, dispatch for, there are three, ourselves, Glenview, and Lake Zurich. Are there more than that in, for?
Oh, in, in Lake County, there's presently still upwards of twenty dispatch centers serving Lake County. It's maybe seventeen, but it's, it's reduced in size, but there's still a lot, and, and there's further consolidations that can happen.
Thank you.
What, do you want us to do anything?
No, I.
With the county or the state?
If, if, we are, both the village manager and I are attending regular meetings, there has been a momentum in the last, I'd say, six months, four or five months, and we're happy to report back to you, perhaps periodically. At this point, your support for this IGA is all we, we really need.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Chief, thanks. Oh, here we go. Proposed two thousand nineteen road, road rehabilitation project.
Thank you very much. This is the time of year where we approach the board and seek concurrence on our next year's road program. We like to get out in front of that while the weather is good, we can prepare plans, and then we can get things into IDOT because it's motor fuel tax money, and get it approved so we get better bid prices and we can start the program come springtime. So, kind of, kind of an overview of where we're at with the, with the village. Our payment management study did show that our roads are in very good condition, so we're ahead of the curve. They recommended, in terms of pavement, one-point-two million dollars per year to, to spend. That does not include the, the concrete part of things, curb and gutter, sidewalk, we may put in storm sewers, so there's usually a little bit more money that's needed, so we, we really look about one-point-four million. That's kind of a gold standard, a twenty-year standard that we typically would like to see, but we can't always afford what, what we want.
Well, is it, this is the spreadsheet you did a while ago?
Yes.
So, there I was looking for, what, two-point-eight million?
I'm not sure which spreadsheet you're.
I don't know, it says for Village of Vernon Hills, capital improvement for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, updated two, two-eight, eighteen. Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty comprehensive list, you know, I mean, I'm sure it includes, you know, Hawthorne Parkway and, you know, Lakeview and Sixty and Lakeview and.
All of the above, yeah, yeah. So, so we're sitting good. We need to continue to fund our roadway program, and in terms of where we're at with the village, for the most part, south of Sixty, we're, we're doing well. There's a couple of areas we need to hit, and that's part of our recommendation. You will see come, I think what you're talking about is the twenty-twenty program. We have money that's coming from the feds as part of the Council of Mayor program, so we're slotting Lakeview and Hawthorne for that year, but in terms of twenty-nineteen, we want to get ahead of that. Our proposal is one-point-one million-dollar project. We typically spend, in this instance, we're anticipating maybe a hundred thousand dollars of concrete work and trying to move forward with that. In terms of the selected streets, we're looking at Hawthorne Club, the south end of Hawthorne Club. I think that was built approximately nineteen ninety-three, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, in that, in that era, and I'm talking about when the final surface ultimately gets, gets down and completed. Georgetown Square, River Grove subdivision, and Augusta Green. Augusta Green, although it's a little bit newer, we ran into some problems with the underlying soils, et cetera, so we do recommend that we go up and take care of that subdivision also. So, that's our, our recommended program, it's in your board packet, so I'm just seeking the board's concurrence with that program so we can move forward, and I would entertain any questions you may have.
Is there any posatlantic space streets anymore?
We still have some posatlantic streets within the A section of Deer Path.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
So, at some point, will they have to be rebuilt, or?
We've actually touched most of those. The first year, we did complete removal and replacement, very expensive. It was almost like when Deer Path Drive was completely removed, impact to residents, et cetera. We learned after our first year, and what we accepted is, we're going to do a grind and overlay, a little bit deeper, put a little thicker mat down, and we're going to understand that, we're going to have some reflectivity of the cracks coming through. We might not get our twenty-year life, but we're looking that we're getting sixteen years out of it, so it's some money saved and less impact to our residents. But yes, we do have posatlantic. But yes, we do have posellanic streets.
No kidding? Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, I know when when Deer Path, when we did that, it was like Ernie liked it a lot.
Yes, he did.
It was deep.
We went down, 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 you know? What, did we go down a couple of feet or something?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And everybody gets stuck, period. Okay, well, this is better, what you're suggesting. So anybody else have questions?
No.
Okay.
That's a concern, concurrence I was looking for, so I appreciate it. We'll move forward.
Yeah, okay. All right, what else we got here? Oh, the unanimous vote agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve A through F and H. I'd like a separate vote on G and I'll explain when we get there.
Is there a second agree? Is there a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Okay, without further ado then, roll call.
Trustees Appenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, G, approval and passage of resolution 2018-055, resolution authorizing an American Legion Post 1247 to use the Vernon Hills Golf Course clubhouse at, you know, 291 Evergreen for bingo games.
Yes, sir. The reason I asked for a separate vote on this is I'm going to be abstaining because I am a member of Post 1247. But with that being said, I urge all my fellow trustees to vote in the affirmative. The monies that will be raised from this bingo events and the the events are currently scheduled for the first Thursday of the month, November through April of next spring, and then we'll review and and look forward to doing it again, potentially the following winter. This is a slow period of time for the golf course and it gives the golf course an opportunity to make some revenue for the participants at the bingo games. But all the funds that are raised are reinvested in projects throughout the community or throughout Lake County and the general community here in supporting veterans, veterans charities. So with that, I make a motion to approve item G.
Second?
I second it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, next thing will be the Queen of Hearts graph.
No, we're we're a very small post with...
I'm only kidding. That was insane.
And apparently, it took 30 full-time employees or volunteers to operate that over that year and a half or two-year period, and they are all about ready to, well, they all wanted to just go to Bermuda or wherever to get the heck out of Dodge.
Yeah. Okay, say, there's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions on the bingo? Roll call.
Trustees Takaoka?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Schultz?
Abstain.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook? Appenheim?
Aye.
For the record, I'd vote aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Motion carries. All right, what's next?
Finish.
New business? Unfinished. Approval of village board meeting minutes of September 17, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion to second. Comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustees Brown?
Aye.
Schultz?
Abstain.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook? Appenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, new business, approval and passage of resolution, yeah, 2018-055 for resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event at Melody Farm located at 849 Milwaukee Avenue. And that's for what, this Sunday?
Sunday.
Yes, Your Honor, that's why it's on the the new business portion of the agenda. The hours of operation would be 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. The the event would celebrate the opening of the five new anchor stores, which include Whole Foods, Nordstrom's Rack, Barnes &amp; Noble, REI, and Home Goods. There'd be activities such as face painting and balloon artists. There'd be live entertainment that would include local bands and two dance teams. Food merchants from Melody Farm will offer samplings from their menus and similar activities like that. Most of the activities will take place on the central lawn, which is generally located in front of Nordstrom's Rack. It'll also extend to the two restaurant buildings, you know, going from that lawn westward. It'll be mostly contained in that in that area. The resolution is attached to your packet with the conditions referenced therein. I wanted to point out one, which is an important condition, is that the village reserves the right to require the hiring of two off-duty Vernon Hills police officers, to be on site during the operating hours of the event, and Melody Farm would be responsible for paying the cost of the officers at a rate determined by the village. So tonight, if the board concurs with this request and feels the temporary use is appropriate, then a motion approving the attached resolution is recommended. And again, representatives of the event are here to answer any questions you may have.
And you're Victoria?
Correct.
Well, you want to state your whole name?
Sure, Victoria Jacobson. Our office is at 1920 North Thoreau Drive in Schaumburg, Illinois.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions for Victoria?
I'd like to hear her explain exactly everything that's going to go on.
Yeah, exactly. We're really excited about it. So it's a ribbon-cutting ceremony that we have tomorrow, which will be a private event, which I think a few of you are actually coming to if I did my name tags right today. In addition to that, this event will be on October 7, which is going to be the grand opening of these anchor stores. So Whole Foods, Home Goods is already open, as well as with Barnes &amp; Noble will be opening. REI is already open too, so all of that will be coming together. We're going to have a character artist, as well as with a few face painters, balloon twistings, a small show for the kids on a tiny stage, as well as with a few local bands that we, or I'm sorry, local dance groups that we've invited to. The Vernon Hills Queens will be making an appearance too, so we're trying to get the community as involved as possible into Melody Farm, and this was a good jump-off point.
Well, this is a good day to have it because the bears are planned.
Oh, yeah, well, there you go. Yeah, so we also have a few food vendors, like City Barbecue is going to be showing some of their menu too. Roadie, which will be a Mediterranean kind of grill, is moving to that location, so they're going to be sampling some food, so it's going to be a really great introduction to the space.
Okay.
And I do want to mention that those, we actually have three police officers now that have been contracted for the duration of the event.
All right, so we got a motion and a second?
We have, but a motion to approve.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Trustee Cook? Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, have a nice day.
You too.
I mean, Sunday too. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. Okay. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Any unfinished business? If not, are we going to go into closed session when? Was that decided?
Whenever you'd like.
Well, yeah, I don't, I mean, maybe we should, you want to do it after committee at all?
Do it after the committee.
Okay, yeah, we'll go into closed session, we won't come out and conduct any other business. All right, so is there a motion?
Hold on just a moment. I think, wasn't there something?
Yes. So, okay, so I I wanted to bring up the new business regarding the smoking ordinances of the village.
Yeah, we're we're going to put it on the agenda, right?
Well, it can be discussed under, just in terms of having a general discussion this evening, but the actual ordinances will come up for a vote on a future agenda. I think the the purpose of tonight's discussion is just to...
Alert everybody that it's that it's coming?
That it's coming and and to get a little bit of direction in terms of the couple key issues that we pointed out in terms of how broad do you want the smoking ban to be in public places, for example, in a park? The proposed amendment to the ordinance would ban smoking in all the parks. Should we have an exception for the parking lot area? Do we think it's appropriate to have smoking where there's going to be youth sports going on, either in the parking lot or in the park as a whole or what have you? There is an exemption for the golf course and and on the course itself as opposed to in any structure. So there's really two aspects to this. Obviously, there's the the retail sale of tobacco and vaping products and so forth under that section and then the smoking, indoor smoking act type area as the other, so...
Well, we want to put it on the agenda, the committee at all.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd like to put it on the agenda for the committee at the whole and then we'll have a more...
Anybody have an issue?
We'll have a a further discussion about it. We did receive information from from Mr. Hunt regarding this, but...
Okay, is everybody okay with this?
Definitely.
Yeah, okay, we'll put it in...
As long as it goes to committee at the whole and and not back at the board level, yeah.
You want to put it in for the Wednesday, 17? Okay. All right, any other comment?
Well, just in, we probably, somebody needs to do a little homework with the Park District because I think the Park District already has an ordinance.
I think it's banned.
Yeah, I I'm pretty sure that they already have, whether they call it an ordinance or regulation or rule, whatever, but I'm pretty sure that smoking is banned with the exception of summer celebration, I think, at the...
Has to be at the...
In a specific area.
Just outside the entrance.
There you go. So anyway, that's...
You know, like, yeah, I mean, that's a tough one. People just walk into pooch, you know?
Yeah.
In the dark, you know? I don't know if we're running around their their pathways, you know, but, yeah, certainly, Jesus, at a baseball game, it's been in place for decades, you know, quite a while.
Yeah. One of the other purposes in bringing up this evening is just with the, you know, advent of Melody Farm's opening and some of the other applicants that have come forward recently with outdoor eating areas and so forth.
Right, right.
This would substantially change the current rules in terms of, you know, basically, if there's food, there's no smoking, would become the rule.
Yeah.
So we want to alert people to that advent so that they don't start with different sets of rules.
So this will be on the agenda the 17th of October. Okay. All right, next is, yeah, we need a motion and a second to reach...
Hold on a second, so since I brought up the...
Smoking?
Well, not only the smoking, but the but the humane, yes. So should we put that on the agenda for the 17th as well?
Yeah.
Or should we do that at a a later date perhaps, or do you think that's a good time?
Well, we get ordinances, we get a review.
Hopefully, hopefully, there'll be further Cubs games, but I don't know if there will be one on that night.
The Cubs, who were they?
So...
Yeah, that's all right.
Down one zip at the bottom of the second, so...
Oh, I was going to start off my comments. Please, nobody tell me what the score is because I'm recording this.
Okay.
So thank you for that.
All right, so are we good? Okay, do we want to move it to the 17th also or move it to the first meeting in November? Is it, it's...
Well, my question really is to the village manager here. What's what's the agenda look like so far for the 17th?
We're we're kind of filling up. We've got three or four things on the agenda already. So maybe we should push that one back because it's a little bit less urgent than than the smoking one. Right, we can push it off to the following meeting.
November.
And then it'll give us the chance to review some of the model ordinances that are out there.
Right.
Okay.
Who's staff?
Thank you.
The light.
That's me, Your Honor.
Oh.
This is the most, this is, the topic would prohibit the selling of puppies and puppy milk and those kinds of things. It's just a point of information is that would require ultimately, once we receive direction from the board, an amendment to the zoning code. So once direction is received from the the village board, it would then go to the planning and zoning commission for a public hearing to consider the text amendment to the zoning code, then back to the board for final approval.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Trustee Cook? Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first thing is approval of the committee at the whole meeting minutes of...
Should just know for the record that there will be an executive session, but no action will be taken after that.
Well, didn't they already say that? About 10 minutes ago?
Close to it because we were going back.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, we we're going to closed session after committee at all.
Which is personnel litigation.
Personnel. And we won't come back out and conduct any further business.
It'll be for personnel and for pending litigation.
Oh, okay. Everybody okay with that?
Fine with it.
All right. So the next thing is, is there a motion? No, we did that.
No one, for number one, are...
Number one, is there a motion to approve the committee at the whole meeting minutes of September 17, 2018?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
There's a second, there's a second? Okay, any comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook? Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Marport?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Request, number two, request for outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for next-door American eatery located at 899 North Milwaukee Avenue, which is Melody Farms. Aye.
Gretchen Chesley, 1822 North Whipple Street in Chicago for the applicant.
You represent...
We represent the applicant, yeah.
Yeah, sure. What's his, is it Caleb or what's his name? Musk? What's Musk's first name?
Uh...
Not a brother.
It escapes me. It's something like Caleb, yes.
I, I, I read, okay, go ahead. Yeah, something like that.
We're on the spot.
Okay, go...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, as you all know, this is another restaurant soon to be opening and, well, by next year, we'll be opening up in Melody Farm. For this request, there'd be 13 tables with a seating capacity of 40 customers that would be proposed on the patio to the north and west sides of the building. There'd be a self-closing, self-latching gate, excuse me, there'd be a fence around the perimeter to separate those who may be consuming alcohol from customers that could be walking by, and there'd be a self-closing, self-latching gate on the north and south side of the patios. Pretty straightforward request, similar to what the board has considered in other areas of Melody Farm. The application, along with the plans, are in a picture of the proposed furniture is attached to your packet. If the committee at the whole feels this request is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the request for outdoor dining.
Any comments or questions on this one?
Motion to direct staff to create the necessary ordinance with the three conditions that are so listed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Marport?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Request for outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for Be Good Restaurant located at 875 North Milwaukee Avenue.
Good evening. My name's Christian Contorino. I live at 3 Sugar Hill Lane, Wakefield, Mass.
Where?
Boston, Mass.
Oh, okay.
Came all the way out here for you. No, Red Sox.
You start talking funny.
When he said the Sox, I thought he was talking about the Red Sox. I forgot you guys have two teams.
We kind of pounded the Red Sox in 2005.
Yeah, but we're in 2018.
Huh?
But we're in 2018.
Well, I know, but I live in the past because that's when my team.
Congratulations on your World Series. It's long overdue. I was actually happy when you guys won, so. Kind of like Boston, 2004, so.
Yes. It's okay.
I felt your pain for another 13 years.
Okay, so, all right, we got this in front of us. Mike, you want to speak to this?
Sure thing. This is, this outdoor dining would have six tables with a seating capacity of 12 customers. It would be on the patio located to the north of the building where Be Good is located. And note that Be Good does not serve alcohol, so there'll be no fence or gate or anything like that, which is typically not required for restaurants that aren't serving alcohol. The application and plans and picture of the furniture are again attached to your packet, and if the cow feels the request is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the outdoor dining request subject to the conditions that are attached to your packet.
Thank you, Michael.
Is there Be Goods around in Chicago area already?
This will be the first one.
Really? How many are there?
Seventy-two.
Really?
Six in Germany, one in Switzerland, and seven in Canada, and the rest are in the continental U.S.
Wow, okay, that sounds good.
Where did it originate from?
Boston.
Boston?
Could you tell us a little bit about the concept?
Sure, it's a farm-to-table. We locally source all the produce, all the meat, not all of it, as much as we possibly can from as local to Illinois as we can so that way it gives back to the community. So we're all about building better communities through good food, and we do fast food, but we do it made by real people, not factories, and it's healthy. So we do burgers, salads, bowls, quinoa bowls.
Walk up to the counter, order, go sit down?
Yeah, so we're constantly changing our concept, but yeah, not the whole concept, just kind of operationally how we do things. But yeah, you walk up, order food. We have an app that you can order on. We have kiosks in the store that you can order on as well, once you become a member and you download the app, so. And then once your food is made, it's usually about a five to eight minute take time before we can get the food out.
Yeah, okay. So you got German food?
No. Burgers, bowls, chicken sandwiches.
Okay.
Are you vegetarian?
You want me to be?
You can be.
Look like a vegetarian?
For a day, you can come down.
Hey, this guy's funny from Boston, you know? Yeah, yeah, no, I eat vegetables.
You sure?
Yeah, what did you say?
Are you sure?
Yeah, sure.
Where, do you know, you see that house? You know where the house is, right?
Yeah.
What is it?
What is it?
Yeah.
An alley, it's a place where people live.
No, that's a horse in your language. By the way, my roommate was from Lynn, Massachusetts. Look at the house, look at the house. I'm going, there ain't no house here. I said, it's a horse. He says, oh, yeah, the hor, oh, yeah, the horse, house.
If it please you guys, I'll come back to the next meeting and just pronounce all words with Oz for you.
No, it's okay.
I don't, I mean, you know, you got the Urban Dictionary, we can figure that stuff out. All right, what else?
I can't wait till you guys come and try our food. We have two more coming in Chicago shortly after, one October, another one in November, Naperville and Schaumburg.
All right. So we got a motion yet?
Motion to direct staff to create the necessary ordinance in accordance with the one condition that's listed.
I'm sorry, what is the one condition?
That you meet the Code of Ordinance, is Chapter 10, Article 6, which I'm assuming you've gotten a copy of already.
He has, and if he hasn't, we can certainly get him another one.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any other comments or questions?
When are you looking to open, did you say?
We were trying to open this Sunday along with all the other five anchors, so we're going to have food tasting there, hopefully. We're still trying to see if we can get our operations and management team out there, so worst-case scenario, I think 10:25 is our targeted open date.
Great.
Full open. We'll keep you guys informed.
You know, you know what pigs in a blanket are?
Hot dogs?
No.
What? I'm from Boston, I don't know.
No, it's a round steak, and then you wrap vegetables inside of it.
Are you requesting that on our menu?
No, I had it tonight before I came here. My wife made it.
Okay. I've never had it.
It had onions, it had tomatoes on the side, and, you know, vegetables, a potato even.
I'll give it to our head chef for advising.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the motion carries, right?
No, no, no.
We didn't.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just playing, yeah.
Me too.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook? Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart?
Aye.
Motion carries, welcome to town.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it very much. Is the business license, do I stay for that?
No, you're good, you're good, yeah.
You just got to write checks. Okay. Next is Mariano's Fueling Station, presentation of concept plan 1720 Milwaukee Avenue. Anybody here for this? Okay, and who are you with, please?
I'm Tim Crutch with Seven Solutions at 3025 Highland Parkway in Downsborough, Illinois.
You're the architects or engineer?
I'm the engineer, and then I'm also joined here by members from Mariano's themselves. We have Sean Nelson, who's the fueling manager for.
Who's this?
Wisconsin and Illinois. Brianna Cotton is the real estate manager for this area.
Okay.
Natalie Mao, she will be the construction manager for the area, and then Sam Strauss is with their corporate supermarket petroleum group.
So who's going to be the G C on?
We don't have a G C.
Oh, you don't have one yet?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, who's taking this one from staff? Joe?
So as you can tell, Representative Mariano's are here tonight for their concept presentation for the fueling station to be located at the northernmost parking lot of the Mariano's parking lot, our property. This 116 space parking lot was initially approved in 2011 to provide additional parking for employees and customers at the store. Similar to nationwide trends with grocery stores, they're proposing a fueling station at this location. Similar to other fueling stations within the community, most notably the recently or ongoingly constructed Sam's Club Fueling Station, this will be consisted of a kiosk for an onsite attendant. No convenience store operations would occur at this kiosk, simply for payment as well as for restroom facility. They'll have a total of seven fueling dispensers, islands at that location, and the hours of operation would be consistent with the Mariano's grocery store hours, which, quarter hours, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The site plan is depicted before you. We also have architectural elevations which are consistent with the existing Mariano's store, and I also have an aerial that's depicted showing the proximity to the site to the adjacent residential properties. What you can see is the closest one being from the northwest, which is slightly over 300 feet distance away. This is a concept presentation, so this is an opportunity for the board members to weigh in on their impressions of the proposal. Staff has reviewed the plan and has expressed a number of different items that we want to have addressed as part of technical review should this matter be directed and moved forward. One of those would be involving access into and out of the proposed site. Obviously, we have concerns over any type of access from the entrance magazine to Mariano's. We also want to verify that the truck access, which is located on the westerlymost access, adjacent to the traffic signal, is not utilized by residential traffic. We certainly want to make sure that any traffic were directed to the traffic signal. We would also obviously want to make sure that any delivery or fueling trucks not use westbound Greg's Parkway past the development. So that would be another item that we certainly would want to make sure we're looking at very closely. And of course, obviously, lighting will be a very serious matter that would be addressed. We'd be verifying photometrics and lights were recessed within the canopy, and while making sure a photometric study was done as part of the plan approvals, again, should the, there be a direction to move forward. There are here requests, direction, our staff is looking for direction from the board. If you so choose, staff should be directed to have Mariano's appear before, to begin the technical review process, and upon completion, this would appear before a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This would be for special use for an automobile service station, as well as to amend the planning of development for the proposal.
Okay, comments, okay. Trustee Takaoka?
I believe we have some members of the community here tonight that would like to.
Sure.
Make comment on the concept proposal, so I know some, I see you out there, please come up to the podium.
I don't care. No, it's okay. Yes, sir, state name for the record, address, that kind of stuff.
Sure, my name is Steve Fishoff. My address is 1527 Oakmont Drive in Vernon Hills, and for the record, I'm one of the few Vernon Hills White Sox fans.
God bless.
So I emailed a few of the trustees earlier. I actually just recently learned about this, and I have a number of concerns. I'm also a member of the Oakmont Homeowners Association Board, and while we haven't obviously had the chance to meet, we've had some communications, and there've been a number of items that have been addressed as concerns from some of my neighbors. Most of those concerns start with environmental and chemical issues. Benzene is one of the primary chemicals that is emitted when gas stations are refilled. There have been studies that have showed, what's been proven, that benzene is a carcinogen. There have been studies that show that benzene is measurable within 100 meters of gas stations. Their house right there is about 100 meters away. There have been additional studies, and I sent some of the things I found to a couple of the trustees, that showed increased risk of childhood leukemia, the closer that residences are to gas stations. And there were multiple studies that were done, and that was, that was from the National Institute of Health. There's also concerns about the light pollution. There are a number of residences that would be, would be clearly visible to this potential gas station. There are a number of traffic concerns. Traffic has become considerably worse on Greg's Landing Parkway in the recent year or so. And there's, there are also concern about negative impact on property values. Be interested to hear from the realtor who's in attendance, but I haven't found any, any studies on, but there was one study done in another country that showed that residences within 600 meters of gas stations had a negative 10 to 15 percent impact on their, on their value. I also think there's really no need. We have the Buckies, that's one mile away. I did a quick Google map search, there's over 10 gas stations within two miles of the location, and that obviously doesn't include the new one that's coming up by Sam's Club. I think the last element is that there's also gas that spilled anytime anyone fills up. There was a study done at the John Topkins School of Public Health that I did send along to a couple trustees that suggested 1,500 liters are spilled every decade that can get into the ground. As a member of the Oakmont Board, we have a retention pond that looks to be, give or take, 200 feet from that site, and we have concerns about that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else, please? Okay.
Two for one. Katie and Ben Agam, 255 Colonial Drive in Augusta Green in Greg's Landing.
Yeah. I said, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We agree with everything that Steve said regarding all of the concerns for health issues. We also just wanted to make a plea to the board that they really take into account the wants and needs of the residents and understand that it's already very busy on Greg's Landing Parkway, and we very much value keeping that with as less traffic as possible. The cut-through has become busier and busier with the extra light at Greg's and Mariano's. Although I do think it was necessary from a safety aspect of getting out of Mariano's, it has definitely backed up traffic dramatically more since it started. And I don't think there's any end in sight with all these being built, which, you know, another grocery store, another gas station, I don't know if it's necessary with six in the village that I.
What do you consider a cut-through?
Greg's Parkway from Butterfield to Milwaukee.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I also, there's a lot of residential traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic that walks to and from the store, and I do believe that having the gas station on that corner would dramatically increase traffic and make it a lot harder for people to walk to and from the grocery store, which is something our village should promote rather than detract from. And I also, I read in the village meeting thing that they were possibly proposing have it be 24 hours at some point in the future, that they weren't doing it now, but that they would like to make that a point, that they could possibly promote that in the future, so.
Yes, I just would like to add, and please forgive for my thicker accent, so please feel free to stop me at any second, the way I perceive it, as I'm sure all of you, the board members are, members are wise enough to determine or consider the, I would say, the risk and issues that can arise as a result of having such a potentially environmental hazard in residential area. As Steve mentioned, gas spills all over the place, whether we have it contained or not, whether we have the most sophisticated, I would say, safety measures or technology involved by the operator, once it happened, it happened, and there's no way back. As Steve, Mr. Fishoff mentioned, there is a port nearby, it's all about, also about soil containment that can happen as a result of the fuel spillage. In addition to that, it really seems to be very close to residential area, which in turn can be either cause fatalities in some kind of environmental disaster in terms of something ignites, which can happen. In addition to that, as my previous, as Mr. Fishoff and Katie mentioned here, basically, there's really, does not seem to be a need for another gas station other than for another, I would say, financial or commercial entity to basically, I would say, collect more revenues from, from us or from anyone else. I would, I really think that the village board and should really be protecting the residents' interests, which are basically to protect the quality of our life and the value of our property, and of course, the safety of our kids and ourselves. And everything else should become second at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else, please?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Robin Cleek, and I wear many hats in front of you, but tonight I'm just here on behalf of myself as a resident.
And your address, please?
1871 Royal Burke Dale. I'm also in Greg's Landing.
And I'm Mary Jane Wang. I also live in Greg's Landing, 1822 Sawgrass Street.
Sure, is that better? Okay, I don't want to be redundant of what Mr. Fishoff and Mr. and Mrs. Agam have already said, so I'm just going to add that in addition to the logical factual plea that they have made, I'd really implore you to treat the front of Greg's Landing the way you would treat the front of any other subdivision. So, Mayor, I saw you kind of make a face when she mentioned that Greg's Landing is a cut-through. If you don't believe that.
Well, no, I mean, you know, it is.
I mean, I would suggest.
It is a boulevard for everybody's use there.
It absolutely, it's a county road, it absolutely is.
We can't close it.
Nobody suggested.
County's actively involved in that.
Nobody suggested we close it.
Okay.
I would never suggest that, but the traffic is becoming.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, what was a cut-through?
Yeah, well, it is. It's a street that people use to avoid 60.
Every street town can be a cut through.
It, it backs up to the point where we can't make a left.
Well, no, I live on a cul-de-sac that's not a cut through. Like, it's not every street in town.
And it's the way all of Greg's Landing was designed to be passed.
Okay.
Right? I'm just trying to, you know.
I know, but nobody else got interrupted. So, please. It is a cut through. I would suggest to anybody that doesn't believe that, can cop a squat anywhere along Greg's Parkway at any point in the day and see how many cars are there. It is a way people avoid 60. It's a way they avoid 176. So, so be it. But traffic has gotten unbearable. What used to take me two or three minutes out of my subdivision now takes me about six. So I cannot let my kids cross the street anymore on their own. People don't stop. They're going over 40 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. I think that, you know, I saw that when, what was the name of that fried chicken place that wanted to go in at the front of Deer Path? Thank you. I saw that when they were proposed, numerous Deer Path residents were not happy. They spoke up. It kind of got dismissed pretty quickly. I don't know if it's 100% off the table, but I would just ask that you treat the front of Greg's Landing the way you would treat any other neighborhood. I think we're sort of tired of getting everything that the village wants to see developed, put at our doorstep. It certainly, forget about the ISO, it's certainly going to detract from our home values to have the light pollution and a gas station that close to homes. And with the amount that we contribute to the EAV in this village, I think it's in everybody's best interest to keep the property values up in Greg's.
I think everyone has made some very good points. I don't really have very much to add, but I can just say, as a pediatric nurse, I have concerns about the environmental and health aspects of introducing a gas station in such close proximity to the residents there. There are numerous studies about this, about the increase in childhood leukemia. And that increase isn't just a one-time thing. It accumulates every year that that child is exposed, is living in that home. So this isn't something that I would take lightly or just ignore. And to Robin's point about the traffic, I have three kids, and I'm terrified to have them cross the street there already because there's blind curves, and people don't treat that like it's a residential, you know, people are supposed to go 30 miles an hour there, I believe it is, but people are routinely going 45 miles an hour down that road. And there's curves where you're crossing and you can't see what's coming at you until it's on top of you. So to add another high-volume business on the corner is just going to aggravate that problem. So, but my main concern is the health aspects of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So you can start. Is there anything else to add from?
I'm assuming, as far as
Was there somebody?
Good evening. My name is Sean Nelson. I'm the Division Fuel Manager with Mariano's. Address is 875 East Wisconsin in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I am not a Brewers fan. I am a White Sox fan as well. So just need to add that since everybody else is thrown out there. So just to talk to some of the residents' concerns, which we definitely are listening to. In terms of the environmental, one thing to keep in mind, the, a lot of the studies when they talk about the benzene is they don't take into account the newer, all the newer vehicles that are out there that have the stage-two vapor recovery within the vehicles themselves that are being made. In general, everything that we do, we're part of the Kroger company. Kroger's got over 1,500 gas stations within their supermarkets across the country. Everything is done to meet environmental standards or exceed. We, if you, if anyone's familiar with the new EPA guidelines that go into effect next month, I'm sorry, actually this month, it's October already, they require advanced spill protection monitoring. Kroger's been doing that for years, ahead of the curve on everything. So we have all that there. We will do, and full environmental due diligence has been done on the property site already. We monitor and maintain everything as we keep going. The fuel staff itself is trained to deal with any kind of fuel spills that you have throughout, somebody just dropping a few droplets here, or if it's something more major. And everything we're going to do is going to meet anything the EPA requires us to do, Vernon Hills requires us to do, the state requires us to do. And then to talk to the point regarding not a need based on other competitions out there. As you guys are well aware, we've got competition being built across the street. We have competition that opens tomorrow in Melody Farms, that are other grocers. One of our strategic plans across the entire country is to introduce fuel as an incentive for a customer. We have fuel centers open at our Crystal Lake location, as well as our Lombard location. And Oaklawn will be opening next spring, once the weather allows. With having the fuel center on sites, another amenity for our customer, one-stop shopping, they do also get discounts with the fuel, too. So by purchasing your groceries inside, you're getting a fuel discount outside. We feel that is a nice competitive advantage from the, for the grocery business, but also lends itself to providing a nice, clean, well-maintained fuel center, which you don't always find across the country and across Vernon Hills either. And then one other thing to add, just in terms of the lighting concerns, we have discussed a little bit with staff, and we will continue to review with them, but all the lighting is fully recessed, and we have no intention of destroying or changing any of the landscape screening that's already in place as well.
Okay. Just Steve Brown.
How close to residential area is the fueling station that's already
Yeah, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. The distance-wise, we have a number of multifamily units that are to the side of the store. So the fueling center's out in front of the store. In relation to kind of putting in, in terms of how the Vernon Hills store sets up, it'd be very similar to if the, if there's residential and a retention pond behind the store and to the north of the store, and then the fueling center would be out in front of the store there. Lombard's similarly set up where it's out on, in front of the store, and then we've got residential completely behind the store, and then across the street, kind of kitty corner as well.
Okay. Trustee Tack York.
Well, I know the concept's been out there. You see it with Myers. You see it with, you know, a lot of stores. I, I believe it's a little too close to the residential area that we live in. I actually live there as well. But really, you know, as a village trustee, I, since this morning, I have been inundated with texts and emails. I was working out at Lifetime, people walking up to me, and they said, we don't, I hope you're not putting a gas station in the Mariano's parking lot. So, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm, you know, I'm not here to discourage business here in Vernon Hills, but at the same time, you know, as a trustee, you know, we're here, you know, engaged in the community, and we have to take a lot of, I, all the input I've had from the community is, we're there, they don't want a gas station in Mariano's for a variety of reasons, environmentally as well. I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm sure, you know, the government has regulations, you check the box, I get it. You know, but if for some, you know, unknown reason, Mariano's closes, or the gas station closes, just like with the old dry cleaners, you know, the chemicals, the soils, it contaminates it. There's no question about it.
The perk.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, obviously, even the dry cleaning business has cleaned up, but all those old places that have, you know.
But that's assuming that there actually would be spills from this
Yeah, but that's just an environmental thing. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, like I said, everything from the community I've been getting, they said absolutely. And, you know, again, we're in elected position. I'm just saying, a lot of people that I've spoken with and have approached me are absolutely against having
And I understand that.
A gas station at the under, at the entrance of a, you know.
And I think that most of the community probably has not seen the aesthetics of the, the fuel center compared to a normal gas station. And they also don't
Yeah.
And they also
It's aesthetic, though.
And we also haven't had the chance to present the, the benefit and perk that they receive from having it on site as well.
I think everyone understands, I mean, they get the concept of gas, shop, you know, rewards.
Right. The loyalty's much different than Myers or Costco or Sam's Club.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. I, I get the business aspect of it. I'm just saying from a, you know, just the, the initial responses at, you know, there is no need for one, quite honestly. That's just, you know, again, that's feedback I'm getting. I can't, you know, talk on behalf
Trustee Appenig.
Yeah, I was getting the same responses. I would ask, is that the only potential lot that you would consider going into? Mariano's has a fair amount of space.
So, yeah, correct. So when you look at the, the way that this parking lot sets up there, you know, from a business perspective, with, if you are down in Milwaukee and look up towards the store, you're completely blocked from the front of the store. So you lose that visibility. The accessibility becomes really tough for the customer. By being on the side, too, I understand that the residents' concerns, thinking there's, it could, you know, hurt the traffic flow, hurt pedestrian flow. But if we put it out in front of the stores, well, all it's going to do is really lock your lockdown, you know, a lot more and, you know, prevent, you have a lot more foot traffic and a lot more vehicular traffic that's constantly going through that front area. There's, if you go sit out there, there's quite a few cars that come in through Lowe's and kind of cut through the lot there, too. So by putting it in this location, we feel that's the best location from the pedestrian and vehicular traffic there. The other question that came up about the other space that's out there as well, that's not currently developed, and that's completely owned by a different entity and has nothing to do with our current landlord.
Is that, is that owned by the developers still, or is it?
Still by the Cuneo Trust.
Still? Okay.
Which lot, which lot?
There's two vacant lots. I'm
To the east.
To the east, correct.
The east of this one, right.
Yeah.
So you potentially could purchase that from the Cuneo Trust.
There's, you know, in, but at the same time, the, the concern that I'm hearing that's not, doesn't change the concerns that have been brought up.
Well, it'd be a little further from the residence, at least, that
Right. But again, from, from the residential issues, it sounds like part of that is just based on traffic flow, which would not be changing from sliding over. And from the environmental concerns, you know, we're happy to address the concerns that were brought up tonight to show that that's
Well, one thing, though, in terms of the traffic flow, if it's in this particular lot, say someone's going to Lowe's to buy, buy a hammer, and then they need some gas, they're going to cut right in front of Mariano's, which is very difficult even right now to get from one side of Mariano's to the other. I think that would encourage that. Instead of if you have it closer to where the AAA is, then they might go out of the Lowe's parking lot and through the back road. It wouldn't be as close to the residential, and then, and then they can go out towards Milwaukee from there. Instead of putting everything right at that, right at that corner is very, is very difficult. It happens all the time that people, I, sometimes I see Mariano's employees have their family members pick them up, and they're waiting right in front. So you have to go around them, and it, it can take a while just to get through the two stop signs, especially when someone's blocking part of the traffic lane. And I see that pretty frequently, especially when I go there in the evening. So for several reasons, I, I'm not thrilled about this particular spot.
Trustee Brown.
It was my same suggestion. It could be possibly farther away from the residence area, and perhaps traffic wouldn't go through maybe Greg's as much as through Milwaukee, but.
Okay, I'll hit you. No, I'm, that's, something Michael said.
But it was, it was the same suggestion, so.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay. Trustee Markford.
My concern, not so much with the, I know they're double-tagged. The lighting, I know, can be changed. The big factor is
Is what the residents are saying, and one of the big factors, it's traffic. The, the traffic, you put a gas station in there, I don't, it's going to have more vehicles going through. And unfortunately, human beings can't put up with a vehicle. They'll lose. Technically, I don't mind so much a gas station, this location. No, I think the residents are right out of it. So I would not look for a gas station there.
Okay. Trustee Schultz.
Woodman's just opened on Deerfield Parkway, and they have had a similar situation. I'm not talking about residential, per se, but they had a retention pond right down Deerfield Parkway from that gas station. Apparently, they solved the problem of lost leaking underground storage tanks. But I don't want to really experiment. So therefore, I'm not sparky on gas stations, and I'm taking the mayor's phraseology here. I was the no vote consistently on Sam's Club. Now there's going in. I think it's still going to be a zoo over there because the roadways don't support it. I don't think your existing roadway supports the traffic right now, and this is going to exacerbate it. Again, it's not, I'm not truly against it, but I'm not sparky about it. So I'm kind of blowing in the wind here, but I'm, my biggest concern, really, though, is the detention pond. And you're right there. And if any gas, or you have any problems, it gets in there, and then it gets pumped in to the river.
What kind of runoff is there now, you know, from the parking lot?
Right.
I mean, for, in all honesty, so with that said, you know, I mean, if the, if the majority of people in, in Greg's Landing don't want it, it's okay with me, you know? I mean, if that's the case, but, you know, I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's
I can understand you in, in being in the neighborhood, you know, you want to voice your opinion on it. But, yeah, I mean, the question is, you know, does anybody want a gas station there? I don't know. I mean, we could, we could put a question out to the, to the whole neighborhood and let them see what they, they respond to. I mean, it's not a hard, hard thing to do in our electronic media age, you know?
This is a concept presentation, so this is just an opportunity to gather feedback.
Right. Well, he's getting feedback. It's not positive. I think I'll jump to their conclusion, you know?
I guess it's his call, though, if I can
Yeah.
Ask the village attorney. It, it's the petitioner's call whether or not he wants to go forward to technical review. But I don't think you're getting any glowing recommendations here.
Who actually works for Kroger's now?
I do.
Okay. And you're, what, what's your, are you an engineer of some sort?
No, I'm the Division Fuel Manager, so I manage all the fuel center's operations once they're operational.
Yeah, so you're not qualified to speak really to all, any environmental issues? He is.
Yeah, we have
You're an environmental engineer?
And then we have, we have a separate engineering, environmental engineering company that we
Right. And they're, and they're not here today.
Correct.
Okay.
And you didn't bring the manager, the store manager here, did you?
I did not, no.
That was a mistake. I, I'd like to hear from the store manager, where he feels this really is going to improve whatever. Because there's been a lot of people out there. And again, you know, you get two or three people that comment in, on public social media forums. But with that being said, there's a fair amount of consistency that since it's no longer Bob Mariano in charge, and it's just another Kroger store, it's just another Kroger store. Whoop-de-doo. It's kind of lost its cachet. And that was one of the things that I wanted to kind of address with the local manager here.
Sure. And, and I could take the feedback back. And I, I just, you know, if we look back, as one of the first developments that's, was kind of in this area, the area's really grown around, we want to continue to invest in the store. This is one way we can do so and continue to bring more business to.
Attorney Hunt, you want to give him the, the speech?
Had you received nothing but glowing positive feedback this evening, it still would not be a guarantee of any future approval or what have you. The other issue that I wanted to raise, and I'm not sure whether you, sir, have any knowledge about this, but I don't believe, while the village is certainly privy to the agreement that it had with the developer, I'm not sure that the village is really privy to the agreement that the developer had with Mariano's or now with Kroger. But to that end, just to raise the issue, there was an agreement that was originally done at the time the site was developed, and there was supposed to be a cost-sharing agreement that was entered into with a right of recapture, in essence, once Mariano's was developed and Lowe's and so forth. And that was supposed to go back in favor of Menards to pay their half of the traffic signalization cost at Greg's in Milwaukee Avenue. Their, Menards has contacted us a number of times now, seeking to find out, you know, kind of what the status of that is. We've urged them to go directly to that developer. We put them in touch with Mr. Pagnotta, and apparently there's been no response coming back. And it might seem appropriate that some of those issues get resolved prior to increasing the number of cars that would be going through that intersection at any given point in time.
Right. Okay, so what do you want to do? You know?
She'd like to speak.
Yeah, I, I see that. Okay. And you want to identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is Brianna Cotton. I'm the Real Estate Assistant Manager for Roundy's Supermarkets. So I just wanted to speak just briefly on the point that you just brought up. So Mariano's leases are store and the parking lot, which includes the parcel that we are talking about now, from our landlord. And so the right-of-recapture clause, although I'm not specifically familiar with that document, I would assume that it is a document that is, was between the developer and the city and potentially the owner of Menards. So, I mean, I can look into our documents as far as that goes, but I wouldn't think that that would, we would be a party to that document.
Oh, I don't think you're a party to the document, but it would be surprising to me that the developer wouldn't have passed on the financial burden of that to the lessee. So that, that was my point, is that
Who's the landlord now?
Is it still Bradford, or?
No, I don't
No, it is no longer Bradford.
Okay. Well, then, that obligation went somewhere, presumably, so.
Okay. So that's all. Anybody else have anything to say? I mean, obviously, our we're not favorable to this concept.
Well, we appreciate all of your comments, and I think at this time, we'd like to just take everything that we've heard here today back to the office and review it, and we will come back before you, hopefully, soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, do we want, and the board, I'll, I'll defer to the Greg's Landing trustees. Do you want a survey done? Or do you want to just kind of rest your case on what's been discussed here tonight?
Well, look, I mean, I encourage people to give feedback. I mean, this is their community. So, yeah, I, let's put a survey out. I mean, if people
Yeah, I don't care.
Feel that strongly, then you've got to, you know, you've got to, you know, let it be heard. Yeah, maybe 25 people approached me today, but, you know, we live in a town of 30,000, so by all means.
No, but I'm more concerned about the people right there, you know, I mean
Well, absolutely. No, absolutely. I mean, right? I mean, if you feel that strongly
We certainly appreciate that.
Yeah.
I guess it would be fair to, to Mariano's.
To Mariano's, absolutely. I mean, they've been a, a good
To get a true representation of the community.
No indictment of you by any means, but No indictment of you by any means, but again.
Would the, would the applicant, since the village does not have email addresses for every resident in Greg's Landing, would the applicant be willing to reimburse the village the costs of putting together that survey and mailing it? Or would you like to get back to us with an answer on that?
Yeah, could we get back to you on an answer on that?
And just to be clear, were you, the survey, I think there are two different things that were up here. The survey would be for the entire village, correct, not just for the Greg's Parkway?
That would be pretty much, I would feel, for, you know, Greg's Landing.
Greg's Landing. So they would be incorporated, but is, do you not feel that there's an importance to survey the rest of the constituents as well?
Well, maybe.
I don't know, you know, I mean. Everybody goes on GasBuddy anyway. You know? GasBuddy, man, it tells you what they're charging at every gas station in the area.
The question of the gas station, its location.
Not it, but GasBuddy, it's an app. You should get on it, you know.
I'm just saying.
Typically, is your gas like 20 cents a gallon cheaper, like Woodman's?
I can't comment on what will be priced at, it really is depending on the market, but we do, we do, again, we do have our loyalty program. With a Mariano's card, you get automatic 3 cents off, and then there's a, up to a dollar off per gallon from there.
Anyway, okay, tonight, that's about it from this, from this seat here.
So, so the, so we'll, we'll wait for them to get back to us to see if they're interested, and then, and then we can move forward.
It sounds like popping for a mailing.
We will be back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, what's next? Olympics.
This one should be, this one should be a little more fun.
We got Chad Gruden here, where's he at?
Chad's here.
Chad, who makes a lot of money off this events, right? What do you say, Chad?
How are you doing, Mr.?
Name and home address, blah, blah, blah.
Name is Chad Gruden. The office address is 390 North Lake Avenue in Glenview.
What is it?
390 West North Lake Avenue in Glenview.
Okay. I mean, that's your office?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I was going to intro this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Most of you already know Chad from soccer events, from the Pipe City lacrosse tournament, Chicago Cup and Labor Day soccer showcase tournaments. Their organization has become increasingly involved in the Vernon Hills sports programs, both lacrosse and soccer. Most recently, they have applied to become a member of the Vernon Hills Park District affiliates program. Chad represent, Chad was going to be here tonight with a couple representatives from the park district, but I don't see them here. Soccer Events Group is in the process of creating an Olympic Development Academy. This is an elite program that will be sanctioned by the U.S. Olympics Committee. There's only 46 Olympic Development Academies in the country, and they would like to make Vernon Hills their host community. There's no cost to the community, but to be fully sanctioned by the Olympic Committee, they would need to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the village, the park district, and the soccer affiliates to allow them the use of certain soccer fields. Chad's here to be able to explain the concept more fully, answer any questions you have. There's no board action required tonight. If the board approves the concept, then staff will work with all the entities to develop an intergovernmental agreement that would be presented at a future board meeting.
And it, and as part of this, would you actually look at in the future, putting up some kind of indoor facility?
If the village was interested, yes.
Wait, 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 what? But would your money?
Well, so, part.
But would your money?
I, I hear you. Part B of it, we've already started to work with the soccer club and.
Well, the Olympics, wouldn't they put money into it?
So, so the federation has some money that they invest as well, but we've already, in the short term, already started looking at some turf options for VHEC. So, so yes and yes, but the federation being the U.S. Soccer Federation, the FIFA organization of the World Cup, does have.
Eighty by 120 fields, 80 acres, I mean, 80 yards by 120 yards.
There's not current space to make those dimensions.
Okay.
They would end up being approximately 108, 110 by a full 72 to 74. But two of them. It's the length, it's the.
And then who's paying for the turf?
Right now, we're in the start of just getting studies and figuring out what's possible.
What do you figure that is, a million bucks a pop?
I'm learning. I want to say yes, high level, but yes.
It's usually a million dollars.
Every bit of it.
A million dollars per field.
The cost has come substantially down over the last two or three years in the turf. It has a lot more to do with the soil than the actual turf, which is why I can't answer that directly. It's what happens under what we see.
Dave, don't we have drainage on those fields now?
We do, and maybe adding to what Chad's talking about, we've had recent meetings on it, and I've been in contact with someone who installs new carpet, and so we're going through those numbers. We don't have the numbers right in front of us, but I don't think we're too far off of, depending if it's, if it's three fields we're talking about, it's probably two and a half million. If it's one field, it's probably one million, yeah.
For two fields?
If you do one, it's probably just under $1 million. If you do two, there's economy of scale. I think what we're really talking about is potentially three fields. We're probably, because the economy has scaled, we're probably at about two and a half million.
For three fields?
For three fields.
Okay.
But we need.
Are they all lit already?
They are all, all lit. Some of the things that Chad was explaining is it's really down to the soils. Is it stable enough? Does it have compaction like a roadway wood that you can build the carpet on top of it? We were lucky when we went through Rustoleum Field that we were able to, we had detention immediately adjacent. As you know, we just lowered the float, which provided detention. We need to resolve as far as detention also. So the numbers are very conceptual, we'll get back to you on what the actual cost is.
And this would be the rubber pellets, and then you periodically got it, don't they put sand down on those fields, too?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Not a fan of the rubber pellets.
There's, there's new, I say yes to the, the, the concept.
Virgin rubber pellets as opposed to the tires with the carcinogens.
Correct. There's even, there's even, there's even organic, now there's even coconut versions of it. Yes, yes, and yes, there are options galore. I'm not an expert of turf, I'm not standing here for turf, I'm, I'm.
No, and you're not looking to us for any money.
Correct.
Because we're not, I wouldn't put a penny into it.
I, I'm not here for that.
Because we already did that. What did we spend, about 15, 20 million bucks on the Nike site? Between the road and the fields? Yeah, we, we put major money into that.
Fair, I'm, you know.
Can you speak to a little bit more about what the community would get out of this?
Out of the turf?
Well.
Because I'm not, I'm not here to speak.
Not, not, not out of turf, but just out of your developmental program.
Absolutely, thank you. The, for, let me just start by saying, thank you for, for hearing this. The three main board members of the, of the local soccer club are actually all out of town. So I'm just going to start by reading a letter from Kevin Atkinson, the president of, of the club, and then I'll comment to, to it going forward. "My name's Kevin Atkinson, and I'm the president of Vernon Hills Soccer Club. Business keeps me out of town tonight, so, so thanks for understanding. As most of you know, when Patricio and I started the club 10 years ago, we set out to provide a local soccer alternative to Vernon Hills players of all skill levels, from rec to travel, and to provide a service that would develop those players to the next level, from wherever they were to wherever they wanted to go. While our mission has remained the same, youth soccer in the United States has changed. Since we started the club, the U.S. Soccer Federation created a development academy system known as the DA. The DA system is designed to provide a pinnacle of youth soccer, a pipeline to the U.S. National Team. As such, the number of official DAs are limited. There are four development academies in Illinois, one of those is right outside of St. Louis. All youth soccer players with next-level ambitions aspire to make the DA team, including talented players from Vernon Hills. Since the creation of the academy system, medium-sized clubs such as Vernon Hills Soccer Club have been struggling and folding across the country. Every club that's not an academy loses their best players to an academy system. The truth is Vernon Hills Soccer Club is already struggling to maintain our players, and specifically our talented players, with the Chicago Rush actively playing on and recruiting from Vernon Hills Soccer Club fields. If we don't provide a better service that shows top-level players a path to the highest level, and most parents believe their child is capable of playing at the highest level, we'll continue to lose players to clubs like the Rush that simply have a larger national name and footprint, and to clubs with more direct path to the DA program. Partnering with SC United's Development Academy will end the flow of departing players. Any player who's leaving through aspiration simply won't go, since that, since that to which he or she aspires right here in Vernon Hills. This partnership will have no negative impact on Vernon Hills Soccer Club, we've worked through all the scheduling logistics. It will, however, staunch the flow of departing players, allow Vernon Hills Soccer Club to grow, improve the quality of service that we provide the community, and ultimately, will bring more and better soccer to Vernon Hills for the generation and generations to come." So that's from Kevin. Essentially, the U.S. Soccer Federation creates this program to create this, this pipeline, this player pathway. And the idea behind it, and the DAs around the country, there's, there's about 45 of them, are tasked with finding good youth, sound community programs, and instill some education in them with the coaching staff and the resources that the federation requires of a DA program. And that's one of the many things that benefit the player. Ultimately, what happens is a player starts deflecting. 12, 13, 14, 15, that they're one of the better players on their team, they look to go elsewhere. And that becomes crippling to the existing. So, so people focus on the one or two that leave, but when you have 14, 15 on a roster, 16 on a roster, you lose your top two, top three. Pretty soon, the next dozen start to wonder if this is the right spot. And so what this does is it actually creates some insulation when there's the proper partnership in place for Vernon Hills Club to stay current and, and existent and no reason to leave elsewhere. It is the primary focus.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, I read a little bit about it in the, in the packet. So someone who's a player of the travel team would have the opportunity to play or to try out for that, wouldn't, wouldn't you still be pulling away from the, those travel teams that were here?
There's no tryout like you would traditionally think of in a travel sport. What would essentially happen is, is coaches from the Vernon Hills Soccer Club would have a separate conversation with said family and said player that they thought was of the DA quality. And then, when they got past that stage, then the DA would come in and take a look at the player. So it would actually be proactive from club, not from DA.
Yeah, so it would be the Olympic.
Correct. 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 So the evaluation isn't, isn't, you know, a tryout per se, it's not like it's an open forum for, for people. This, the, the idea behind it is to, to support the, the ambition of the player, but via club up, not via DA.
Okay.
But it's still sort of a, they'd be going to a separate team then if they're.
Well, but there'd be kids from outside of Vernon Hills.
Correct.
Probably the majority of them.
Sure. I mean, well, I mean, you know, maybe from all over, what? What, what part, would you be in multiple states that kids would feed in here?
It wouldn't be multiple states, so there's currently a development of program in the Chicago Fire. Every MLS program is required to have one. So there's one in, in the city there. There's one in Palatine, the Soccers have one. And then this would be the, the north area, right? And so there's not much crossover intentionally, there's not a fight for player. The idea behind this is to help U.S. Soccer.
Yeah, sure.
Create the best World Cup team. The idea isn't to fight with competing people.
Right.
So, so we, we wouldn't necessarily.
Yeah, it wouldn't be like you're snaking a bunch of traveling players away from the teams in town already.
Correct.
You know?
And it costs us nothing.
Correct.
We've established that. Because we are, we already spent a lot of money over.
Yes, sir. With that, I mean, what are, what are we looking for here?
Yeah. What, what do you need from us at this point?
Do you want to take that one?
I think at this point, what they're looking for is a, a letter from the board to the Olympic Development, the Olympic Committee, saying that Vernon Hills supports the concept. There's no, there's no commitment. Like I said before this, if the board approves this, we would work towards an intergovernmental agreement between the three entities that would then come back to the board for your review and approval.
Motion to direct the village manager to draft an appropriate letter covering this subject for future review by the board.
Second.
Motion and second. Cam, some questions. Trustee Brown.
Well, I guess my question was. Was, I, I don't understand the partnership with Vernon Hills Cougars, the Vernon Hills Soccer Club, because you said, like what he was saying, you will still be pulling kids, the best ones, from those travel teams. So I, I didn't understand.
You, go ahead.
They'd be going to Palatine if they weren't.
So they're, they're going to deflect, just to be, just being very honest and direct. The best players are going to deflect from a local community club, no matter what, okay? What this does is, there's a, there's a partnership that we want to create between the Development Academy and the local club, so that those players don't have a reason to look at a competing, more elite club than Vernon Hills. They stay. And they stay with one aspiration, which is, let's say, the, the 1% player has the opportunity to play for the DA. That's it. So that at 12, they're not deflecting, or 11, or 13, or 14, because they think the grass is greener. They're staying because the resources that a Development Academy has for coach education, for sharing of curricula, for nutrition, for off-field stuff, for travel support, whatever resources there are, help insulate that deflection. And, and quite frankly, that's been pretty well proven all over the country when a DA does the right partnership.
And this will be a three-year agreement, is what you're looking for?
Correct.
And then dedicated times?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So after three years, if, you know, we don't like it, we just say it's over?
Well, it would be more.
But it's a three-year.
And the soccer club determined.
Well, Canada has something to do with it, since it's our field.
Yeah.
No, I know, I mean, if it didn't work out, then they're, you know.
We delegated the assignment of times and slots to the partners.
So here's one letter.
Yeah, in anticipation.
This, is this my proxy to chief?
Okay, did you, did you sign that already?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'd, I'd like to make a copy of it for the file. In anticipation.
I didn't even know you did it, for God's sake. I'll read it then, yeah.
Yeah. In anticipation of the board's support, I drafted, I took the liberty of drafting a letter. Timing is of the essence here.
Mr. Chad Gruden, Soccer Events Group, you know, blah, 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 Glenview. On behalf of the entire community, I'd like to congratulate your organization for efforts to become a member of the Vernon Hills Park District Soccer Affiliates. We would also like to commend your initiative to establish an Olympic Development Academy in Vernon Hills. We understand that as part of approval process, the U.S. Olympic Committee needs assurance that ODA teams will be permitted access to certain designated soccer fields for practice and games. More specifically, your organization is seeking to establish a three-year agreement with the village and the park district to use Fields 11 and 12, maybe now we're talking three fields, I guess, Monday through Thursday, 5 to 10 p.m., from August 1st to December 1st, and April 1st through June 15th, weather and field conditions permitting. So on and so forth, so.
Can I?
Could I give it to them?
Can I, can I ask a question? Do, do other Olympic development programs have indoor facilities as well?
Yes, so the reason why it's, part of the requirement of having a Development Academy is to have an indoor location.
I'm sorry, is to?
Part of the requirement from U.S. Soccer is to have.
To have an indoor, so, so what's your intention for that?
We have three of them currently. We have one in Glenview, one in Niles, and one in Highland Park.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a problem with the letter in that it's, it's too specific with regard to the times.
I don't.
I'd prefer that, unless you got that directly from the park district and the soccer club...
I do, and, and the, the last paragraph on there says that this is completely subject to an intergovernmental agreement that would need to be approved by all three entities.
Okay. With that being said...
Would that help you with the Olympic?
It does. We, we have an audit every two years that U.S. Soccer comes through and has to give permission for A, B, and C with a full coaching curricula, et cetera. And this is one of their requirements.
He needs a copy of it.
I know.
Mark. Mark would like to make a copy.
Was this the only copy?
It was the original. The draft is the original.
Would you tape it yourself? You don't have to answer that, you know?
All right.
All right.
There, there was a motion, and the first would like to amend the motion to make it subject to intergovernmental agreements being executed at an appropriate time.
And the release of this letter to him?
Yeah, the, yes.
Second concur.
Okay. Second agrees. Roll call.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Markport?
Aye.
Cook? Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And for the record, I vote aye. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
See the lady with the gray coat to get your copy.
Have a good night.
I guess the motion carried in some way, shape, or form. You know, it's open for more negotiations. All right, is anything else on this?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Let's see.
Licensing requirements for the placement of donation drop box.
Oh, yeah.
Something near and dear to my heart.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I can give the board a, a brief summary of this if you wish. I think everyone's familiar with what these boxes look like. They, they show up in parking lots throughout a retail center, and they tend to multiply. Some are in better conditions than others. In some cases, the items are left in the box. In some cases, the items are left outside the box. In any case, when they become unkept, they can be, they really can be an eyesore for the area. So trustee Schultz at a prior meeting requested that staff look into license, regulations, so that we can come up with reasonable requirements that would allow their placement, but with certain limitations. And we've gone about putting together that draft amendment. It's attached to your packet, and I can review some of the details with it. First and foremost, it would require that a license be obtained from the village. It would require an annual renewal. The initial license would be fifty dollars, and then it would be a twenty-five dollar renewal fee after that. Secondly, it establishes what zoning districts these boxes can go into, which is our B1, General Business District. Retail uses that are contained within a business park district, that would be Walmart, Target, those types of stores. Public lands like the Park District, Public Works, places like that. Also, property that's used for places of worship. The regulations would limit donation boxes to uses only by charitable organizations, and a definition of what a charitable organization...
You got a list of, you know, who's doing boxes in town now?
We don't, but we will. Because one of the things that are in, in these regulations is, is a sunset clause. It would give property owners and owners of these boxes sixty days to comply with the requirements. So there'll be a time as the construction season slows down, and when we have these regulations in place, we would send letters out to the property owners advising them of the new regulations, and be able to start following up on them.
So they wouldn't even have, know who they, they're allowed on their property?
Correct. The, the...
They just show up?
Yep.
It's a cube van with a magnetic sign on it, and they pick up stuff, what I've seen.
And many of them have, they do not have a website. They have, you know, give to me at gmail dot com as their...
Well, you know what I'm thinking? If you're collecting a lot of clothes, they might be using it for the new insulation out there.
Absolutely, yeah, the blue jeans, sure. And, and door making, you know, filling shelves at resale stores. That's why I really...
And it doesn't itch.
So...
Like fiberglass insulation.
Yes.
That's the guy, you could buy it at Menards. You could sleep on it.
My only thing that I had, I, I love everything that Mike has put together here. I just think that the licenses are too cheap. Fifty and twenty-five.
Yeah, we could, I'm, I'm, I'll listen to the board and what you think is appropriate. Just as a reminder, we've limited this to charitable organizations that are allowed to put these in place. That was the thinking behind the fee. But if the board thinks another fee is appropriate, we're, we're here to listen.
The village attorney has comments.
Oh, yeah, he has a light, too.
And it's on. Coincidentally, I was just looking at our sign ordinances and some others from surrounding communities today for another purpose. But it dawns on me, having to read a couple, having read a couple of the cases, that we have potentially at least some First Amendment ramifications to what we're doing here, to the extent this rec, this somehow could be argued to be an expression of one's religious beliefs, or part of their faith or practice to do that. And so I'd like to just take a look at this before it actually gets implemented, so that we make sure that we're not running afoul in terms of charging permits or restrictions that could, that some, make sure it's content neutral, that it's not something that's going to implicate First Amendment considerations.
Yeah. But we're gonna bring this back anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've read a lot of that material, too. And, and obviously, I, I think if there is a motion that would direct staff to prepare the regulations, we would add in there, subject to review and approval by the village attorney. Then we could put that into ordinance form, and then bring it back to the board for final consideration.
Yeah, I would make that motion, but I'm looking for feedback from my brethren as to what they would see as an appropriate initial license and renewal.
Trustee Brown? Do you want to comment on the, you don't like them? You don't, I mean, you don't like the clothing boxes? That's what this one's about?
I mean, yeah. It depends on how it looks on the outside. I don't...
The yellow...
Yeah, okay, well, so, all right.
It's based on aesthetics. Like, I don't want it to be rundown, full of rust.
Yeah, okay. All right, trustee Takaoka?
Yeah, I think the license could be...
Yeah, we should up the fees.
Throw out a number.
Huh?
Throw out a number.
Two fifty.
Twenty-five and fifty?
It's fifty and twenty-five for renewal.
I don't know, a hundred and fifty and three hundred. I mean, it's arbitrary.
Since you brought it up, why don't you throw out a number first? And we'll see if we agree. I don't understand what you're looking for, really.
Yeah, I, I was thinking like two hundred and a hundred.
One fifty-three.
Well, and, but in reality, some of these organizations are absolutely legitimate.
Absolutely.
So I don't necessarily want to, you know, whack a, a, a genuine nonprofit.
Right.
It's a goodwill box or something, Salvation Army.
There are no, there are no goodwill boxes here.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, I've seen someone pull up in a cube van with a magnetic sticker on it, and I guarantee you, I, I should have asked, but the guy looked a little shady, so I don't know if he was carrying anything. So I watched it, and it's a cube van with a guy just throwing the stuff in the back, and who knows what tells.
Take it off.
Yeah.
Well, he's got a key to open it.
Oh, yeah. It's got a magnetic A, B, C, something like that.
Oh, it's got a little code box on it?
No, no, a sticker on his, on his, on this cube van.
No, but how do you get into the, the box?
Picked it up, and, no, I think it just opens up. You can grab anything you want out of it.
Which is a problem we have. It's American Legion people are shopping, or not Legion, the Emmes.
Is that part of the ordinance also, that it has to have a lock to open it?
It should.
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
If I may, instead of focusing on the fees, does it make any more sense to remove the fee requirement in exchange for a requirement that they submit to the village board, or submit to the village staff, a copy of statements from 501(c)(3) IRS approval from the Secretary of State, et cetera?
No.
Why not?
Because you can get that. You can get a 501.
But it takes, it, it takes some time, some money, and some effort. My only thought is, you're gonna have to probably waive this for religious organizations anyway.
Right.
And so...
And none of them, to the best of my knowledge, are religious organizations.
Well, can you name one?
No, I can't, because they're so obtuse. I mean, I, I, there's the purple ones over by...
The worship comes in and says, this is my religion, and this is my... You're running into some tension there, so...
All right, well, let's do this. We're not, how are you gonna...
The thing is, right now, we have nothing to force the landowner to enter into an agreement. So this is doing that, okay? So that's number one that needs to be accomplished. Number two, though, if we put a, a reasonable but significant dollar figure to it, it's gonna take another group of players that may or may not be willing to skirt around the agreements with the landowners. So that's why...
And then the public works could forklift these things and will store...
Oh, it'd be up to the landowner to get rid of them.
We're gonna have a sticker come in and it goes on the...
All right, well, we're not gonna get closure on this tonight. And you, so you think you got enough information here to have staff drop the ordinance?
I do, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little unclear on the fees. That's the only thing I'm unclear on.
We'll hold the fees for...
We'll hold that for the next discussion?
Yes.
So we'll make it as part of new business as opposed to, or old business and not part of the omnibus agenda.
Okay, so we'll put together the ordinance with everything, but it'll be a blank where it says fee. Otherwise, it'll be in full ordinance form after the village attorney's review of it, and we'll have it on unfinished business.
Sounds like a plan.
That's a motion directed after that extent.
That's what my motion so states.
Are these typically locked, or do we not know?
I don't think they are.
You don't think so, you, Joe does.
You know, I made a note, we can include that in the regulations, so people can't go in there and take stuff out.
Right.
I'll make a note that they were required to be locked.
All right. There's a second, right?
Second.
Okay, second. All right, this is coming back under what, unfinished business?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Trustees Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markport?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Motion carries. Okay. And next is the part-time building inspector.
Part-time, yes. Part-time building inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone is aware, we've been through a period over the last eighteen months in particular where we've had a big spike in permit activity, inspections, plan reviews and such. And although challenged, we've been getting through it fairly effectively. This challenge has been further complicated last August when one of our inspectors became injured on a job-related accident. So he's been out since that time. And we're at a point now where we can't predict when he'll come back. We know, at the very least, he won't be back until December. What we've done in terms of adjustments to keep up with pace is a couple of things. First of all, we've taken full advantage of our shared inspection services agreements with Mundeline and Libertyville, and they've done a really good job stepping forward to help us, more so than any of our communities have had to do in the past. Secondly, we've used the code enforcement officer to do small inspections, like fences, patios, driveways, things like that. We had trained him last winter when we were slow for these, and so we're taking advantage of that. And then, lastly, I've been doing most of the commercial plan reviews, and, and to a limited extent, some of the inspections as well. And we've managed to get by between last August and where we are now, and we're gonna survive this construction season. Bigger projects like Melody Farm are, are, are winding down. There's a lot of tenant space for modeling. But a lot of the other projects that keep us busy in the summer, you know, like the, the decks and those kinds of things, will be going away. So we're, we're gonna make it through this year. But it's with next year in mind, and again, the fact that we can't, we can't predict when the inspector will come back and how long he'll be on workman's comp, that we're looking at alternative ways to get through. Right now, we have, you know, we have our backup plan as the shared service inspection. And then the backup plan to the backup plan is ten thousand dollars that's in the budget for consulting services. And as we went about the business of getting pricing for consulting services, what we learned is we can't, on average, we're paying, you'd have to pay about eighty dollars an inspection. And if you can imagine eighty dollars an inspection, and we, we average about sixteen inspections a day when we're in the middle of, of our construction season, that would be over three hundred dollars a week. And that would get us, that would be over six hundred dollars a day and about three thousand dollars a week. So we'd eat through that money very quickly. We were kind of throwing around ideas. We came up with an idea right now that's effectively being used in the police department with their telecommunications, whereby we hire part-time employees. It could be retired inspectors, it could be firemen, it could be someone just trying to get their foot in the door. They are not regularly scheduled, and they're kind of used as part of a bullpen, where when we, when the need arises, we can contact them, and we can say, hey, can you work this week, or this day, or whatever? We would put their pay range at the same rate that the building inspectors are. So assuming a mid-rate pay range, that would get our costs pretty much in half, where we would be paying about sixteen hundred dollars a week, three hundred dollars a day. So we can get twice the bang for our buck by exploring this option. And we, and staff is requesting that we go down this path. What we would do then is, if the board concurs, is we would ask that we would be able to amend the ordinance to create these two part-time positions. It would be scheduled as needed. We then ask for authorization of a budget transfer of ten thousand dollars from professional services to salary. There's no request for additional funds. And we would make this request just for this current budget year. We would then post for these two positions, again, these as-needed positions. If all goes well, we can fill them, and we think we can. We'll see if that happens. And then we'll see how that works for us in the spring. We think that's an approved backup plan to the backup plan going into the spring.
You're saying they would be village employees?
They would be village employees, used only on an as-needed basis.
Would they, any benefits to them?
No.
Other than work cap, you'd have to cover them under that.
Yeah, and...
But not the group health, or?
No.
Okay. Or retirement, or any of that stuff?
Correct. And, you know, and if it's a retired building inspector working that few hours, I mean, they might work a couple of weeks a year at the most.
Yeah. But you said there's sixteen inspections a day sometimes?
Well, when we're in the middle of, of our construction season, a heavy construction...
So that's about twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, eighty times sixteen.
That's correct.
Not the, because you got something that's six hundred and forty bucks.
Yeah, and what I was doing...
About twice that.
I was assuming we have one inspector, and then a third, covering half of them at eight. I use that as a scenario, just as a comparison purposes, maybe.
All right. Does, does staff want to comment on this? Are you for this manager flesh hour?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.